Hitting the button right now.
Okay, let's make sure it's up.
Prepare.
I don't see the video on our page.
I see the note that says video is now streaming live on YouTube.
Okay, we're good.
I'd like to call to order this May 20th, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Gomez?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Moffett?
Here.
Ms. Schofield?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Item B, motion to approve the agenda. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda of the May 20th, 2020, regular Board of Education meeting. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion. A member of the board, or super request any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Motion, please.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gomez?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Item C, opening ceremony. Item one, welcome. Our vision of Falls City Schools, the hub of our community, committed to a culture of care, education for all. Number two, informational items. This meeting is a meeting of the Cogga Falls Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not a public community meeting, although there are opportunities for public participation. If an individual wishes to address the board regarding a topic found on the meeting agenda, the individual must send an email to boe-meeting@seafalls.org. Following the introduction of the topic by the board president, followed by board discussion, the individual will be recognized. If an individual wishes to address the board regarding a topic not found on the meeting agenda, she or he must notify the superintendent and/or board president of the topic no later than seven calendar days in advance of the meeting. The comments of these individuals will be read during the board business portion of the agenda. In both cases, comments will include the name and address of the individual and be limited to three minutes. In addition, in public session, the board will not hear complaints about school personnel nor against any person connected with the school system. An unadbridge board agenda for this meeting can be found on your electronic device at the address shown on the screen. And the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Cogga Falls Board of Education are on June 3rd and June 24th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. And now for our pledge of allegiance, Mr. Anthony Gomez.
Stand as you're able, and I'd invite those watching to join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Item D, treasure CFO's business consent agenda.
Thank you. I would like to recommend to the Board of Education that they approve the consent agenda as listed.
No moved.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Mr. Gomez?
Hi.
Item E, treasure CFO's business, Mrs. Christie Stoykoy.
Okay, I am going to start with the presentation that I have. So let's do that. There we go. Okay. So what's up or down with school funding? There's a lot, but there's a lot that we don't know. I, I don't, we don't know going forward. So this is probably one of the more difficult forecasts I've had to do just with a lot of unknowns and the, and that being that the people that are in charge don't even know, that make the decisions don't even know. So you're going to see a lot of different things in here that are basically projections from experts or other of my colleagues that have been doing their five-year forecast as well. So the purpose of a five-year forecast is to engage the board and the community in long-range planning and discussions of the financial issues that are facing the district. To serve as the basis for determining the school district's ability to sign contracts associated with continued operations. And to provide a method for the Department of Education and Auditor of State to identify school districts with potential financial problems. So a little summary of the forecast, this is our filing, our May filing of the five-year forecast. The assumptions are estimates based on historical trends and information available at the time of this filing, which as you know, right now is changing every day. Fiscal 2020 represents and is used as the base year for which future projections are derived. It's driven by assumptions, even though it's numbers, it is driven by assumptions. The information and data used in preparing the forecast is conservative in nature. This allows us flexibility when those unexpected situations arise as they are happening all the time now. They're based on information available to the district at the time of the filing. But it's likely that, and it's very likely with this one, that the information contained in this forecast may change. This is a snapshot of this day. Forecast change, but trends over time do not. I have a feeling going back in this current year and next year, maybe the year after, those will kind of be some outliers in any future trends that we have. As always, as we always look at, we will need to remain diligent in assessing the need for any additional expenditures as each expense raise, addition raises expenses with no revenue, which hastens the decline of our fiscal year's cash balance. So here is the summary of the five years. So in the very left column, you can see that's 2019, that is actual, and the last five years are projections. The black column is our total revenue. The gray column is our total expenditures, and the pink you start to see towards the last few years there are our renewal levies. So that is the section of our revenue that is dependent on those renewal levies. And our yellow line is right where our cash balance is. So ending year five, we are positive at a little under 7 million. This is a little better than we were in November in year five. But as you'll see, as I go forward, some other things have changed in the middle years and how we get there. So here's an overall look at the revenues and kind of the trends. Our two largest revenue sources are real estate taxes and our state funding. It's about 80% of our total revenues. Four of the renewal levies are modeled. There is one expiring at the end of this year, one expiring at the end of 2021, and there are two expiring at the end of 2022. Our projected revenue is only expected to grow at an average rate of 1.3%. So real estate. November's four mil operating levy is included on this line. So we received a half a year collection this year, and next year, 2021, we will be, we will receive a full collection. This is also a year for the sex annual reappraisal for Summit County. So that is going on currently. They recently completed their triennial update in tax year 2017. I don't expect us to have any kind of effects from the coronavirus from this as they're looking at past years, history 17, 18, 19, and not anything that's happened as of recent. We do have a projection of a 1% to 2% decrease in fiscal '21 and fiscal '22 due to an increase in, in potential delinquencies as a result of the pandemic and the effects on our economy. We have actually been receiving more than 100%. So we're actually receiving everything we're supposed to plus delinquencies from prior years past. So when I say it's projected to decrease 1% to 2%, that's based on what I had it at previously in May, which is already a decrease from what we are over 100%. So i- in total, it's really from what May's or November's was projected, excuse me, it's more like 3% or 4%. As you can see down here, and this has the numbers associated with it. The green has the renewal levy. Sorry, I probably hear my dog barking. So you can see as we get to this last fiscal year, it's pretty much, it's more in renewal money because by at this point, we've got four, four of them are in here. It's more renewal money than it is an actual guaranteed money at that point. So those are going to be important going forward. So let's talk about those a little bit. We said there were four. There's a 7.9 mil levy that expires this year. A 9.97 mil levy expires in calendar year '21. A 4.75 mil levy and the 2017 emergency levy expire in calendar year 2022. Renewal levies are modeled at the bottom of the forecast, so we cannot assume the renewal levies in our forecast. So that's why you see a big decrease in this line item at the top, because it is not assuming the renewal of those levies. And if you look in the graphic below, as you can see, this very bottom section here shows what it would be without those renewal levies being renewed and, and successful. By fiscal 2022, we'd be $2 million in the red. So those are very crucial. There would be a substantial loss of revenue if any of those levies were unsuccessful in being renewed. And we'll touch a little bit on this later, but also here, based on the forecast, this is our revenues over expenditures or vice versa. So this year, we're projected about 2.5 million to the positive, which is good. It's up just slightly. It's pretty much almost identical to what it was in, in November. And then these years start to take a little bit of a different change from what I had in November, but we'll see some of those graphics later on. Public utility, personal property and property tax allocation, those kind of go hand in hand with the real estate. Public utility is very small. It generates less than a percent of total revenues for us. Also modeled in the green there, you can see renewal levy amounts. Property tax includes a 10% property tax rollback for all residential and business. And then in 1979, the additional 2.5% rollback was enacted for owner occupied homes. The 10% after 2013, any new levies after 2013, excuse me, are not, no longer paid for by the state. They're paid for by the taxpayer. Anything that was a renewal is not included in that, but our 2017 and our 2019 levies are reflective of that. The property tax allocations gives us about 6.4% of our full revenues, and you can see in the green there a portion of those that are renewal levies. Unrestricted grants and aid. This has, has been a big factor, and it's going to be a big factor going forward. So unrestricted grants and aid are the money that we receive from the state. They account for a little less than 25% of our total revenues. It is the second largest source. In addition to what comes from the state, our proceeds from the casinos are included in this category. Just a reminder that student wellness and success funds are not included in the forecast. They are required to be posted to an outside fund that is not general fund. And you can kind of see the graphic here of where we've been and how we're coming down here in those years and then, you know, flatlining up here. So funding in 2020 and 2021 originally reflected the governor's changes to the funding formula as part of his biennial budget, starting last July. So what had happened was basic aid amounts were frozen for the two years, and they were based on the funding the district received in fiscal 2019, which for us is about 15.7 million. On May 4th, as we all know, he announced the cut of 300 million to K-12 education. We were reduced approximately 940,000, which is about 6% of the district's state aid. However, on the flip side, and you, you won't see it as a revenue, but you will see it offset expenses on the expenditure side. We received approximately $500,000 from CARESAC funding to offset that loss. So in, in totality, we've lost a little under 450,000 this year. Fiscal '21 projections assume a 10% reduction to those 19 funding levels. However, nobody has any idea what's really going to happen. It could be much more. It could be less. There are any number of things that could happen and variables in that equation. Whether he dips into the rainy day fund, how school looks next year. There are so many things, it's hard to even gauge. But that, that's, we did this to try to be more conservative, go a little more than what we were cut this year. And hopefully soon, we'll be able to hear something about what next year looks like. After that, the 2022 revenues are projected to return to FY '19 funding levels and then remain flat. 2022 will be the beginning of a new biennial budget. So there, there's going to be a lot of things in there too, and it's going to depend a lot on the state's economy. Casino revenues, as I mentioned, were included. As you know, they've also been closed since March 16th. This year, we have received, we received our casino amount in full. We received about 241,000. But going forward to next year, those revenues were reduced about 40% because of the closure. And slowly over the remaining three years, get back to that 240,000 approximately level. Now, those are based on enrollment, so that fluctuates based on our enrollment numbers. And there is, right now, it's $52 per student, but there is talk of, you know, that possibly being cut as well. So we are, we are waiting to see with, with that. Restricted grants and aid. So they have both, the state gives us both monies that are restricted and unrestricted. Restricted, obviously, as implied, has specific reasons, and they have to be spent or they must be returned if they're not spent on those specific reasons. So some of them include our career technical education. That is what we received this year. Economically disadvantaged, that is what we received this year. And then catastrophic costs, which we have not gotten our fiscal 2020 actual numbers yet. So the estimate is just based on what we received last year, which was around $159,000. I don't anticipate any of that to change going forward. It, it should stay relatively flat. All other operating revenues. So this is basically everything else that we didn't cover. So interest, rental income, open enrollment, excess costs and tuition for non-resident students, pay to participate, et cetera. So these make up 10.7% of the district's total revenues. So even though it's, it's smaller, it is third among all of our, our categories. So there are some, there's a lot of key components in here that have been affected by the coronavirus and, and potentially could have effects going forward. So open enrollment last year was at 3.5. This year, we received 3.7. That's up around a little over 250,000. Excess costs and tuition has gone up from last year about 500,000. The TIP payment from the city has also gone up, as you can see, about 125,000 or so. But they are also going to be affected by any potential increases in delinquencies. So I expect that number to be decreased. Rental income. This year, we were status quo as we were getting towards the end of the year. We, we kind of hit the mark. We brought in just about what we brought in last year. But future reductions in rental income due to cancellations and when we're going to be allowed to do those sorts of things. For us, it's a little over $100,000 a year in rental income. So that could have an impact. I cut that by about 50% going into next year. Fees and tuition are another one. We did not collect spring sports fees. That was a nominal amount, being that it was spring, moving into the fall and not having an idea of what's going on there. That could be another potential loss if, if you do not have any kind of fall sports. We could see a potential increase in federal income waivers. So kid, the percentage of students that aren't free and reduced increase, those students are not required to pay school fees for any type of workbook or anything like that. And that becomes at a cost to the general fund then. Investment income. This year, we met the projections, but the future is, is very unknown. We know that it's more than likely not going to be the same. We haven't experienced this kind of situation in at least over a decade. So that is also on decreasing in the forecast. And Medicaid reimbursements. This year, we, we received 200,000. Next year, we're looking at about a 25% reduction. Given that we were not in school these, this entire time, there are certain services and there are certain things that would have been billable, for instance, that, that we didn't, we did not do that, because we could not do. After that, those are phased out in fiscal '22. It, by 100% there. Total other financing sources. This is kind of an outside category, I guess you would say. This includes our transfers, our advances, things of that nature. So the major changes that were in '19 and '20 that you see in the forecast are due to transferring the emergency levy funds to that special cost center. It's not revenue, more revenue that we received, because you'll see it being offset by expenditures in line 5.04. We did receive refunds from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation and SARS. It totaled 440,000. So one of those, we received two from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation this year. One being just recently for about 230,000. Expenditures. So obviously, like any other entity where people is your business, salaries and benefits make up our two largest expenditure categories, 71.1%. And operating expenditures are increasing by an average, let's just say 2.48. Sorry about that. This exceeds, and that should be 1.3. Too off on these. But that exceeds the 1.3 growth in projected total revenues. Total expenditures increased just slightly under 1% from '19 to '20. And, and there are a lot of factors involved in that as well that we'll go through. So personnel services, this would be all of our salaries. This is 49.3% of our operating expenditures. As I mentioned in November, the reduction in force that was implemented going into this year provided a cost savings in this category of over 1.1 million. '21 through '24 assumes the inclusion of steps for all staff and a 2% wage, wage increase on the base salary. These aren't guaranteed projected rates, and they're only included to show the impact of the increases historically given in what the trends have been. Three unions this year entered into agreements to extend their contracts with no base increases on salaries. And they are set to expire at the end of this year. So obviously, this provides us with a little bit of unknown too, going into that, being that we have not settled or begun negotiations at this time. So you can see in the graph here, the slight, the slight tick upward to account for those 2% and the steps. This really has not changed from November. But this is another one that could definitely be impacted if we're looking at school a different way. And, you know, do we need more of something? Do we need less of something? There's a lot of questions, definitely, that will come up dependent on, on, on how students are learning next year and going forward. So this year, they were projected to decrease 2.3%, and mostly that is due to the reduction in force. Employee benefits. So these are 21.5% of our operating expenditures. This includes retirement, Medicare, health insurance, workers' comp. The reduction in force also has benefit savings, so that was about 245,000. Here are the increases for the past years. You know, '19, it was an 8.5% increase, and then this year, we were fortunate to have a 0%, it stayed flat. Next year, we're looking at a 4.9%, which is down from November. November was estimated at 8%, which is what the last three years are, '22 through '24 are being estimated at. These, the benefits category is projected to decrease 4.1% in 2020. Purchase services. So this includes all of our professional and technical services, legal, nurses, garbage, utilities, tuition, open enrollment out, those things. The majority of the spending in purchase services, the largest dollar amounts are driven by state and federal mandated spending. These mandated spends include deductions for community school students, John Peterson, Ed Choice Autism Scholarships, STEM School, and then increasing numbers of students with special needs and the different assistance that they may need. So a, a big topic, and even though it's been froze, it will continue to be a, a big topic and have an impact on us going forward if it stays the way it's been proposed. So right now, they've, they've put it on hold and left everything status quo. Right now, there are approximately 400 individual school, school buildings. But with these proposed expansion changes, it's going to jump to 1,200 in fiscal 2022, among other requirements that will allow the number of eligible students to increase significantly under the expansion. We currently do not have any students on Ed Choice scholarships. But I know we had talked about this in a meeting in the past, back in, in January or February, that over the course of four years, looking at the students we have now that go to non-publics or that would qualify, it could cost us over the duration of those four years, $15 million, which would obviously be a big hit to our finances, big time. So that is something that definitely to keep an eye on. Like I said, right now, we do not have anybody that currently is on those. But looking at that expansion, it, it could definitely swing that, that, start that number increasing. We also saw a small decrease in costs for substitutes and utilities due to coronavirus. These savings are not assumed in future years, as we don't know again what it looks like. It wasn't a huge savings in this area, only because for us, it was only about two months of the school year. So the majority of the school year had been in, and it was two months. So we did see a, a slight decrease, but not, nothing huge. Component of this, as I mentioned before, the student wellness and success funds are in another fund. They're not included in this forecast. This year, we received 426,000. Next year, we're receiving 588,000. That's the estimate. What they can do is help us offset existing general fund expenses. What they can do is help us offset existing general fund expenses. So the district doesn't assume, or I should say the forecast does not assume that these funds will be available beyond fiscal 2021. As part of this year's, this biennial budget for the state, and that's all that's there right now. From what I understand, this is not anything that's currently on the chopping block as far as cuts to balance the budget. That this is kind of safe. I haven't heard anything to the contrary. But I'll be keeping an eye on that as well. So this allows supplant and supplement. So supplant is, is by using this money for expenditures already being incurred by the general fund. And supplement is anything in addition to or outside of the general fund that we would add. So they would be new programs or new personnel or anything new. So typically in any of the federal grants, you're not allowed to supplant. You have to take that grant money and you have to supplement. This particular one, they are allowing supplanting. So we supplanted $146,000 this year of the 426,000 for our behavior specialist and mental health coordinator. And that we have used the remaining funds to supplement in the future years. Right now is the plan. 22 through 24 assumes that any additional expenditures that are added as a result of the student wellness and success funds are assumed to continue at a cost to the general fund once these student wellness and success funds have been depleted. Looking, looking at some of the numbers that we have put together from that committee. The way we've spaced it out because there's no requirement to spend it in the year that it's given to you. So you can hang on to it and you can spend it out. Looking at the numbers we've looked at, this will be spread out pretty much until about 2023, 2024 is when our general fund will start picking up some of those expenses. You won't see any increases in the forecast until those years. That's when our funds would be depleted. Supplies and materials. So this is all textbooks, keeping buildings open, cleaning supplies, et cetera. So there's a significant increase in this line from previous years due to the passage of the emergency levy. Beginning in 2020 through 2023, the district is forecasting a textbook adoption of 300,000 each year along with additional supplies and materials to go along with that. You'll see a jump here in 2021. And the reason that is, is that there are two textbook adoptions forecasted because there was supposed to be one in 2019 that did not happen. But was still on the emergency levy plan. So at this current moment, there are two pushed to this year. Strictly just to put it back into the forecast, not to say that we're going to do two next year, but to put it in there. So we know that that was something that was part of the plan that we still haven't done from a prior year. A one-time reduction of 50,000 is modeled in 2021 from CARES funding. There are 12 permissible uses of funds under the CARES Act. And specific to this category, they can be used for our cleaning supplies and items to sanitize the facilities. And so that's modeled in next year to kind of cut some of our cleaning supply costs. Capital outlay, this one is probably the most drastic different from years past and most of that has to do with the emergency levy from 2017. Capital outlay includes expenditures for equipment, technology equipment. Basically these items are expected to have a life expectancy of five years or more. So as I mentioned, it significantly impacts this line item, the, the emergency levy. That plan includes items such as technology roofs, parking lots, buses, trucks, et cetera. And then due to the passage of the bond issue in this past November, 2019, the district reassessed and updated that emergency plan in January of this year, 2020. A one-time reduction of 450,000 is modeled in this year, 2020 due to CARES Act funding for technology person purchases. When we went to this unexpected shift to distance learning, the district purchased and have them, have them coming in the 2,000 Chromebooks in the spring we purchased to go forward into next year in case they were needed. So one of the allowable uses is to offset any kind of technology that would apply to help students with distance learning. So here's the updated emergency levy plan. So this year we have some vehicles, three trailers, a box truck, a truck with a plow, roofs, which we did that contract last meeting. We have parking lots, Richardson, and then some maintenance overall. And then technology about 565,000. Looking at next year, two buses, lawnmower, roofs, parking lots, technology, boilers are on the list then for next year are added. Pretty much the same thing going from 2021 to 2022. It's different buildings. And then in the final year, when we would receive our last half collection of the initial term of that levy, we have buses, parking lots, different equipment, air conditioning at DeWitt and technology purchases to keep up with, you know, the recycle and replace of these Chromebooks. Other objects. So this is not a large category by any means, but this is what, where Summit County auditors, the fees for the collection and distribution of our tax revenue, our audit charges, any memberships or dues that we, we have incurred. So there's a projected increase in fees in 2020 and 2021 because of the four-point mill operating portion of the November 2019 levy. So we received those funds, but then they also charged us their, their fees for any, any number of things. So we got about half of that this year and then we'll see the full going into next year. And so that's why there's that increase there in those two years. This is the line where I said things would be offset. The, the transfer of the emergency levy funds moving to a separate cost center. So this is the offset of the revenue. These are trances and advance, advances similar to the revenue side, but this is paid out. Something else that would be in here is when tax, taxpayers, excuse me, file reductions in property values and if approved, their refunded taxes paid previously. In the year that they're refunded, a reduction to our tax proceeds is applied to refund that, that taxpayer. We, we look at those, we look at those every year after those are filed to make sure we're protecting our tax base. The revenues over expenditures and this will give us a, a little shot of everything. So this line is probably the most important line of the forecast. It gives a good sense of the district's fiscal health. A positive number indicates that the district spent within its revenue for that fiscal year. And a negative number indicates that its expenditures exceeded the revenue resulting in a reduction to any surplus the district holds as a cash balance. This number should never be negative. That, that is the goal. So we're, we're going to see a little bit of a difference from November to May here in this next slide. So if you look up here in November, line 6.01 and not have you pay attention to the one at the bottom. So the one at the top is without the levies being renewed, but you can see that even in both in November and May, how much that is if, if none or some of those are not passed. You can see the drastic difference from one line to another without the passage of those renewal levies. But looking at this bottom line where with levies renewed, you can see in November, we were about at 2.4, we're at 2.5. So we came out ahead, which is pretty good considering we got cut 941,000 by the state amongst other things. So that's, that's positive for this year. Looking into next year, where we're expecting a, a lot of the cuts to hit, you can see how differently that flipped. It's about 2.4 million the other way now. We were 1.6 revenues over expenditures. And now we're looking at a negative 650,000. Again, there's a lot of what ifs in that year, in years 21 and 22. There are a lot of what ifs based on the current state of the economy and K-12 education. So I expect this to change and it could change honestly either way. So it's definitely something that we're going to need to keep our eye on. You can see looking in 22, 23, 24, we've improved from where we were in, in November, where I anticipated we would be in November. So, so that's good, but we're still in 23 and 24, have expenditures over revenues. Again, that's pretty far out. There's a lot of conservative assumptions in there. Those numbers are not going to end up being those numbers as they become closer to reality. So fund balance. So the average district in Summit County has a 37.6% cash carryover. That was based on last year. Alga Falls is the fifth lowest in the county, which based on 2018, we were the third lowest. So we've moved up a little bit. How Department of Education recommends that we have at least 60 days cash carryover. Industry standard is 25%. And while we have approved that cash position, we need to focus on establishing that healthy carryover and making sure that that is, that is increasing and we are not expending more than we're bringing in. So we do maintain a positive cash balance throughout the entire forecast. So you can see the difference. And as I told you, the fifth year is better, but you can see the hits that we're taking in those middle years based on those cuts. And so it's kind of spread it out a little bit more. From where we were, as you can see, we were looking at 11 and 11 in those years. And obviously with, with the cuts that we're anticipating and or delinquencies, that has gone down substantially in those years and then has recovered back in, in years four and five. It put us a little bit ahead by the end of the forecast compared to November. Cash carryover position for us looks like this now. So last year we were at 11.64%. We are looking at 18.26% by the end of this year. We are, we are meeting the 60-day cash carryover for O D E. We are not quite at 25% in any of these years. We are pretty much right on the money in 2021 as far as O D E standards. And then you can see how it starts to decline. Our cash position starts to decline over those remaining few years. So it's quarantine day again. Sort of feels like every day like Groundhog Day, yet at the same time, it feels like something is new every day. And I guess that is part of Groundhog's Day. He, he's something different happened, change something every day. But I would like to know when season two of this year starts because so far I don't like season one. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Kristi. That was really informative and well done. I appreciate it. I did, I was able to print it yesterday and I sat here and went over it like hours. So yeah, I just wanted to try to understand, but thank you very much for the notes, especially because I'm a reader, not a numbers person. A little easier.
Oh, you're on mute, Ken.
Head the spacebar.
There you go.
Any questions or further comments for Ms. Stoykoy?
I just wanted to, not only do I like what the five-year forecast says, you got it to us way in advance, way more in advance than anyone ever has on the board. And I wanted to express my appreciation for that. You gave us time to, even more time than we usually get to process it. You answered my questions in advance and I wanted to thank you for that. I would add, I think you missed the good opportunity to put a meme on your questions page. You should do David S. Pumpkins, "Any questions?" There's one critical comment.
I will write that down. Yeah, I, I, I know it's a lot. I like to try to get it out early because I know it's a lot to go through, especially this one in particular. There's a lot of changes. There's a lot of predictions that we're, we're just not sure of right now. So.
I appreciate.
I'd like to add, this is your first May five-year forecast with us. We're anxiously awaiting. And, and, and good work indeed.
Yes.
We've already heard from some board members about the timeliness of you having that to us. And Ms. White talked about the thoroughness. Both of those ingredients really went a long way. I commend you for this work. It's, um, it's an, it's an excellent document that I think will help guide us in the days ahead. Knowing full well that there's so much uncertainty.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
I plan on, you know, keeping this with those changes. Obviously there could be some major changes going forward and, and when and if those are decided, I will incorporate those and, and let you guys see it from there as, as things are changing so that we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that the folks who might be watching or are public realizes too. You figured in about a 10% possible reduction in our revenues in this five-year forecast, trying to take into account some of the uncertainty that's out there right now. And that's one of the things that I wanted to thank you for because sometimes when we're putting these things together, we don't look at a worst case or a worser case. And I appreciate you going out there on a limb and at least putting numbers out so that if we do get that bad, we're already prepared for it. So thank you.
We're ready for a, a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Mr. Gomez?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Okay, and moving on. Um, I have the April 2020 report. So I'd like recommend that the Board of Education approve the 2020 investment schedule and monthly spending report.
So moved.
I'll second.
I moved and seconded.
There is only one thing I wanted to point out here. Obviously I went over most of the general fund stuff, so that's kind of already been covered, but I do want to show food service. Obviously food service has been impacted by this shutdown as well. So if you look, you can see that in April, we only received $69,000 in revenue. When, if you look at these past months, they are 150, 175. And if you look at these months across, they were 173 and 188. So it is certainly, certainly a lot less than what we're used to. And I anticipate it to be even less going forward in May when we have May's final numbers. Obviously our expenses were down a little, but it, once again, being the people business that we are, they, it, it's salaries and benefits and those people are, were still working and they were still getting meals ready for students and preparing those. Being at the individual sites for that pickup. So you can see that they're down because the, the amount of food just wasn't necessary this month. But here, it, you know, suffered, they suffered expenditures over revenue in that, in that case, in this month. Luckily, they do have a healthy cash balance. But this is another thing to keep our eye on going into next year because given if things are the same. given if things are the same, um, how we approach this because part of the way this could affect the general fund is if we ever get to a point where they do not have a cash balance and they do expend over revenues, the it is the responsibility of the general fund to cover that because they cannot end in the red. A similar thing, I will say, could potentially happen um, in athletics. They, we we had this discussion back in the spring, uh, KJ and I, where he was telling me that he was thankful that the shutdown didn't happen in the fall. Because for typical athletic funds, um, you receive most of your revenue in the fall at your football gate. And that kind of sustains the rest of your year. Your spring sports don't have ticket gates. So you don't really receive any revenue. And so the the stuff that you bring in in the fall and the winter sustains the budget for those sports and those different things. And the majority of the money comes from those five home games in football. And without that, we could be in a situation with the athletic fund. If there's something in the fall where you know, we can have football, but you can't have all these spectators or something. That's something to keep our eye on as well as a possibility. We would be, the general fund would be responsible to cover that that debt to that athletic fund. Because they can't be in the negative at the end of the fiscal year. So this year, they're both in in good shape, but definitely given any of the things that come out or protocols that come out for next year, it's something to keep an eye on.
Kristy, may I ask, um, the reason there is no gate revenue for spring sports?
Typically, it's it's just some, I mean, some of them may at times, but you know, something like softball or baseball is there, it's it's an outside. There's not typically someone set up. I mean, you're not getting in anywhere. There's no, there's no gate, let's say, for instance, where you're you're doing that. And it's it's not typical. It's not just us. It's just not typical in most districts to have that in in the spring.
What about something like track, though? Is that pretty consistent from district to district? Are you saying that no one collects gate keys for track?
I I that particularly I'd have to look into. I know districts that I've been in the past have not that I've been around have not. To get a, I can ask to get like a wider view of everything. But but typically, there's not a lot of revenue brought into those tip athletic funds in the spring as compared to fall and and even winter. You know, it takes it down from winter and winter doesn't have that many either. Because there's just less sports.
Kristy, I can chime in a little bit there. Um, any revenue that we do get for varsity track and field would be offset by the amount that we have to pay the officials at each one of the events. Each one of the events have um, typically an official or, you know, certainly the starter would be a a paid official at the event, even if you have volunteers that are running. Say the pole vault or the shot put or what have you. Those kinds of things. But any kind of revenues that you would have, gate receipts that you would have at a track event would be offset by officials fees.
Thank you.
And if you consider that Kristy's right, if you consider our uh, baseball and softball venues, just the way that they're set up, being able to charge admission, if you will, to a baseball or softball uh, event. Given our, given our venues, it would be next to impossible. You stand on the outfield and and watch the game and you never came in a gate.
Thank you.
I just wanted to commend Kristy for our interest. She's done a lot to improve that and make that a really good return on investment for us. I think it's important for the community to know that not only are we responsibly spending their money, we're responsibly investing their money to get the best possible return that we can. So thank you once again, Kristy, for all your work in that area.
Thanks. And I'm glad you pointed that out because I did want to mention that. Did you see a big jump in the Huntington, which is our main account compared to these? When I first got here, I kind of looked at these and thought, why, why is it only that much? And so right around February, March is when we met with Huntington. I knew there were other options as far as what type of checking account we have with them. So we switched in in March, which obviously then we saw the first benefit of that in in April.
Any further questions or comments on the financial reports? Roll call, please.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Mr. Gomez?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
And then donations. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve, accept the following donations.
I'll second.
Moved in seconded. We, of course, accept with gratitude all of the work from everything from parents and teachers and those that work with the Donors Choose program. We're grateful for it all. Roll call, please.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Mr. Gomez?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Any comments to Stoykoy?
Think I said it all.
Thank you for your fine work.
Thanks.
Item app superintendent CEO's business consent agenda.
Helps if I unmute myself. President Schofield, members of the board, it is recommended that Board of Education approve all items listed in the superintendent's business consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank Julie Jones for the um, detailed narrative that she sent us today in regards to the textbook purchase. That was really helpful and backgrounded. So thank you.
Roll call, please.
Now I'm on mute. Mr. Gomez?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Item G, Superintendent CEO's Business, Dr. Todd Nichols.
Thank you, President Schofield. Members of the board, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve a contract with Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity, I C S, and the Cogge Falls City School District costs associated with this contract will be paid with Student Wellness and Success State Grant Funds.
So moved.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah. On page seven of this contract.
Okay, can we go to page?
Yep.
It gets into the warranty, which is number four, number five, the release to liability, number six, some confidentiality. And then on page eight, number eleven, the no disparaging statements. I'm not not thrilled that this contract has these releases in them or that there's no representations or guarantees regarding the results of this program. In addition, I'm not sure what on page eight, number eleven, the no disparaging statements, just exactly what that means. Because if you look at this, it says neither the district nor I C S shall directly or indirectly make false or unwarranted statements or claims regarding the other party during and after the term of this proposal. So I'm not sure what they mean by false or unwarranted statements if someone isn't happy with this program.
That's pretty boilerplate contract language. Um, it's on a lot of contracts. And it just means basically if you're not happy, you don't go around trash talking them and they won't trash talk us if they weren't happy with us.
Yeah. Like I said, those are the concerns that I have and I I'm not thrilled that this doesn't have some sort of warranty.
I think um, I think with a contract of this nature, so much of it is dependent upon our staff embracing a different way of thinking and a different way of behaving and how that impacts teaching and learning. And I think, Mr. Martin, we we will do more than cross our fingers. We'll put, I think, everything we possibly can put in place for this to be successful with our staff. But truly, at the end of the day, there's there's no way to guarantee that someone will implement with integrity some new ways of thinking. And I'm not sure that any kind of a contract could make those assurances.
Well, I said, I'm not comfortable with this contract. And um, I personally would rather have this postponed until I have an opportunity to find out more information on the company, exactly what all they do. And chat with other school systems that have utilized them to see exactly what they do with the staffs and employees of those school systems.
We've known that this contract's going to be coming for months. We've been told about it. I too had some concerns as well. And uh, Mr. Lazar and Dr. Nichols were kind enough to have a Zoom meeting with me and address those concerns that I had. But to say that we need more time when, I believe, if you go back to the notes we were given, and I think it was first given to us in February from Student Success and Wellness, we've been getting their meeting notes. That was in their February meeting, possibly before them, but that's when I first remember it. So to say that we need more time, I'm not sure that that's that's a fair statement to make.
Mr. Gomez, I'm not saying we, I'm saying me. You may not feel you need more time. I feel that I still do.
Dr. Fritura is from, uh, they're they're out of the University of Wisconsin. That's where these two um, leading researchers come. Dr. Fritura actually grew up here in Cogge Falls uh, when when she went to school and so on and so forth. But uh, that being said, they are currently um, working out of the University of Wisconsin.
I'll just add one more, one more comment to this conversation. And that's this. The Ohio Department of Education is encouraging school districts to develop comprehensive literacy plans. And we've had some preliminary discussions, as you know, about what that might look like here in the falls. Part of those literacy plans cite B O D E, I C S, and an equity resource that helps play field for all learners. In fact, if you go to the O D U website and look at what they're talking about in terms of school districts literacy plans, see is that this organization and this equity professional development is recommended as a way to impact student achievement. In our conversation.
Karen, you froze. While she's, while she's returning to us, what I would say is that out of O D E, their letters be planned specifically references Dr. Fritura and Dr. Kapper.
I I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm I'm buffering here and maybe you you can't hear me and I apologize.
We can hear you now, Karen.
Yeah, it's on page, it's actually on page thirty six of Ohio's Plan to Raise Literacy Achievement. There's actually a whole um, section in there about integrative comprehensive systems.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. I'm sorry, I was I went to look for it and ended ended up out in cyberspace. But um, as we take a look at impacting student achievement, uh, this is certainly an avenue that's going to help us with that. On top of that is the state grant money from Student Wellness and Success specifically advocates for about a half a dozen initiatives. And one of those initiatives is professional development. Why is that? I think part of that is because if this money dries up or if.
I'll just add some of the things that um, I brought up as concerns that uh, Dr. Nichols and Mr. Lazar addressed uh, when they met with me, which I once again thank them both for greatly appreciated that. One of my concerns was that, to me, it seemed like a top down approach, that they're starting at the top and working their way down. Um, but in speaking with them and then reading um, some stuff on I C S afterwards, the the goal is to get buy in at the top levels of administration and to help them understand what's going on so that they can help then go out and train teachers and support staff and other people. So it's not meant that the top level is implementing everything. It's just that's the first people they start talking to about it. So I think that's a very important piece to have in understanding that. And then in my conversation with Mr. Lazar, we talked a lot about how in success and wellness and just in education in general, we're learning more and more about how, where we learn is how we learn. And that this will be um, effective in that as well and creating a school environment that is best for our diverse learners. And we all know that our learners in Cogge Falls only grow more and more diverse every year. And through that, uh, Mr. Lazar and Dr. Nichols and I started to have a conversation about, well, if where we are is how we learn, what does that look like in this unknown fall learning environment? So I really feel that this contract is perfectly timed, not just in terms of equity, but and also in terms of this unknown landscape of learning. I think this is going to be a huge benefit to our district.
I agree, Anthony. I think it's totally critical that we um, explore all these avenues of equity. Because um, as you were stating, students only bring prior knowledge to their learning environment. And the more aware that the instructors are and those who are working with the kids are about that child's experiences and um, the diversity of the the environments that they find themselves in, the more effective instruction can be in that classroom or through technology. But um, I think years of experience teach us a lot, but we're also receptive to new ideas. And um, having perceptions changed perhaps by the way things are introduced. So I think it's it's critical that we do this because we really need to meet all of our students' needs. I mean, it's it's something that's being asked of us more and more, and we can only do that if we understand them. And understand ourselves. I should put that in there as well because we we need to understand our biases and um, how we perceive things too. And when we have groups of people like this working with us, I think it becomes more clear to everyone about tweaks that can be. about tweaks that can be changed in the classroom.
Kathy, Kathy, I think the work, I'm glad you brought up the biases. Because the work that we've done over the last couple of years, coupled with the environment change in the last couple of months, I think puts our staff in a unique position that they can embrace a mind shift from a deficit-based system to an asset-based system. And that's really what, that's really the, the core of the work that's, that, that we're looking at with this contract.
Well, and I think too, to chime in with that, having been an instructor in the classroom, not only am I need to be focused on my biases, but I'm also encountering biases of perhaps people in the public or even some of the parents that we work with. And it, it's important for us to know how to address those professionally. Because often when we encounter those, it sets you back and you have to stop and think about the words that you're going to express to that parent or that peer, if you will, a teaching peer or someone else. So I'm hoping that this will give us more tools in the toolbox for instruction.
Hope so.
Was Karen able to join us again?
I'm here. I'm sorry. I think we're ready for a roll call, Ms. Stoykoy.
Mr. Martin?
Hey.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Mr. Gomez?
Hi.
Item number two, it is recommended per Ohio law thirty-three nineteen point zero-two that Board of Education approved the following three-year administrative contract for Mr. Kevin Vargas.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Moffett?
Hi.
Ms. Schofield?
Hi.
Ms. White?
Hi.
Mr. Gomez?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Item number three, facilities construction update. Well, having spoken with T D A and with our banker Kent Castle from R B C, it's still uncertain as to the direction that O F C C is going to take. In my first conversation, I, with T D A, it seemed that O F C C might announce that funds would be frozen for F Y twenty. And therefore, we might consider going down a program change from perhaps Classroom Facilities Assistance Program to expedited Local Partnership Program, which would have to be approved by the Board of Education and approved by O F C C. In my second conversation with R B C, it seemed to, the, the notion would, might be that O F C C might go ahead and release funds. It's to protect the funds that they have already been, that have already been allocated, I guess, is, is the best way I can say, to O F C C out of the state budget. And in that case, we would be rolling along with the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, which we have been in right from the very beginning. Like I said, it's still extremely uncertain as to what's going to happen in terms of our funding from O F C C until we hear from them one way or the other. We're kind of at a standstill still at this point. So I entertain questions with regard to facilities.
Can I just clarify one comment you made? It's not unsure that we will get funding at some point. It's just unsure of when it will be correct.
That is correct. That is correct, Mr. Gomez.
Dr. Nichols, do you know where the O F C C gets its money from? And what I'm trying to find out is, someone was talking with me today and they had mentioned that the tobacco settlements that go back to the states a few years ago seems to be that pool of money that's now being used to fund the school projects. Is there truth to that or you're really not sure? I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to find out because it was a question that was asked of me.
Yeah, Mr. Martin, actually, the, you are, whomever you were talking to is, is largely correct. When, when the tobacco settlement took place, that money then was awarded to the state and was allocated to O F S C at that point, right at the very origin of the development of O F S C. And so that was essentially how the state had allocated that, their money to O F S C. But ultimately, just like us as a school district, we have a pot of money and we choose to allocate it in different, different ways, particularly in, in emergency situations. Now, we didn't see O F S C or, or O F C C reduce their project list, if you will, when we went through the recession in the late two thousands, two thousand eight to two thousand eleven, that, that timeframe. But this situation, as we know, is different than anything else. You know, even during the recession then, the state was still open and was still collecting sales tax. The state hasn't been collecting sales tax, you know, for, for some time. And, you know, of course, they, they're, this is all political in terms of how the budget's going to be allocated. In some of my meetings, even if we were to allocate all of the rainy day fund, we still wouldn't have enough money to cover where we, where we need to be in terms of the state budget. And so this may be a situation where we're in more drastic measures, more drastic times. We're just waiting to see.
Okay. So, thank you for that information. The other question that was asked was that if that were the case, that if the tobacco money, is there, is that a yearly award? In other words, are the tobacco companies taxed every year on their profits and that money is then allocated again to the states? And I don't know. And that's why they were asking me about this.
Well, I can't, I, I don't know the answer to that question. That's, that's just honest. I don't know the answer to that question. I believe it's the settlement money that came out of the, you know, the, the, the tobacco lawsuit, class action lawsuit that then was awarded to different states. And so I think it's the settlement money. I don't know that it's an annual tax, like a sin tax to cigarettes and tobacco and cigars and such. But I don't, the real answer is, I don't know the answer to that question.
No, that's fair enough. I'll go ahead. If the person hasn't watched the meeting tonight, I'll relay that information to them tomorrow. And maybe perhaps see if we can find out the answer on the tax issue on a yearly basis. That's something that tobacco companies, when we have time. I know you're still very, very busy, so.
Christie, do you have anything different?
No. That's about what I would have said. I don't have any other specifics that, that he didn't mention.
All right. Anything else on facilities? The next piece then is digital learning. So I'll entertain any questions that we have regarding digital learning.
You're referring to our distance learning, right? Using the computers at home?
Yeah, distance learning, digital learning. Basically, what does, what is it gonna look like in the fall? And that's how I'm interpreting this question, really.
Dr. Nichols, I have a question. Do we now, or will we have data from the digital learning that took place this spring regarding the number of students who actually signed in? The frequency that they signed in and the completion of work that was done during this period of time?
We have been monitoring student logins to Google Classroom and other things right from the very beginning. And we've been sharing those reports, excuse me, with Building Leadership so that if there were any students who hadn't logged on, that they could be directly contacted from the, from Building Leadership and/or Teacher Leadership. So we have that. The reality is, unfortunately, that there are different ways to log on. So if, for instance, one of the things that actually my son brought to my attention is, is dad, I log in with my phone and if I don't log out with my phone, I'm always logged in. You know, and so the data that we might get is their last login time. And the reality is they've, they never left. So that's one thing that, that we've learned through this period. Also, one of the things that we haven't been able to track at, at this level is the actual authenticity of the work that's being done. And that would have to be done at the teacher level and at the building level to track exactly what kind of return rate we are getting on assignments and, and so on and so forth. What we do have in terms of planning for the future, I mean, without question, we learned a lot this last few weeks. And without question, there's a lot still to learn and to get better. And I think we can all acknowledge that, that we've, we did okay. But we can do a lot better and we're gonna need to do better if, if, if this kind of a platform may continue in, in some way, shape or form. And so in terms of data, what we are collecting is, we're issuing three surveys that will be done and completed in draft form for me to review next Wednesday. And we're hoping to have them out at the end of the week, next week or early next week. Those surveys would be parent survey, a student survey and a faculty survey. And amongst those surveys are questions, essentially, how, how did it go? And what can we do better? And if this were to continue, how comfortable are you in terms of sending kids back to school in the fall? How comfortable are you with a digital or distance format or whatever? We had this, the, this remote format that we had here and/or a hybrid type of a format. So we're going to collect that information from our faculty, from our parents, from our students. And we're gonna combine that information with information that we're gonna get from O D E and from the governor with regard to legislation, the Board of Health, state recommendations, and then O D E requirements and suggestions, which I'm hoping that that comes out this week. I was really kind of a little bit surprised that no mention of twelve education came out, came out Monday. Tomorrow is the next press conference from the governor. But my notes that I just took a look at were from a superintendent's meeting, statewide superintendent's meeting today. Does that answer your question, Kathy?
Yep, somewhat. I'm, I'm some, one other question in regard to your surveys. Will, will they just be through the internet? Or will they be available perhaps to families who do not have internet access in a paper form?
Well, that's a very good question and something, and, and something for us to consider. I do, what we talked about this, this last week in both our Administrative Council and College Career Readiness Meeting was making them available online or online through our website that I would send out an all-call and the email that's associated with the all-call system that would give people access in that way as well. In terms of actual paper pencil type of survey and that, my hesitation there is how do we deliver such of a, such a thing? I mean, we want, we, certainly we can mail them. I mean, that's the, the snail mail, old school option, right? We can still do that. I certainly would want return, the turnaround on those to be pretty quick. Because we're gonna get this guidance and, and the reality is we're about twelve weeks from the beginning of school unless we delay the start of school, which is something we're considered to.
Correct. So do we have information from the buildings, perhaps from the principals of families who needed the work packets in that form compared to instruction so that we might know who would, who would need that?
Sure, sure. And that's, that's information that we, we would know.
All right. My apprehension is that perhaps families thinking that the school year has ended, which essentially it has for them and the responsibilities that they have incurred will not be signing on, will not be checking things like this. The phone call generally reaches, I'm assuming, the, the better part of our Black Tiger family. So in that phone call, could something be stated if internet access is not available to them? There is a place where they could pick this up or let us know that they need that survey in hand. I, I don't want to not include those families for their, you know, it's an equity issue essentially, if you will. I don't want them to be excluded from the survey due to lack of access, if you will.
I, I hear you. I got it. And yes, it can be incorporated.
Thank you.
Dr. Nichols, this, this really is just tangential to a school issue, but one of the other things I've been hearing about has to do with before and after-school childcare. And, you know, parents maybe not necessarily being opposed to having their children come to school. But some of that has to do with what happens to them after school or on a day when school may not be in session or on a technology day or whatever. Because when the state was shut down and no one was going to work, that was one scenario. Now that we're gradually getting back up to speed and no one's home with the younger ones, that seems to be on the minds of some of our young families. We, I know we don't have an answer for that, but it's something I know that is of concern.
Yes. We are considering, well, we're considering everything. We're considering all different kinds of options. You know, and I know the governor came out with a statement with regard to hybrid and that did bring up the concern about childcare, particularly if kids are there part of the time and not all of the time. And so that is certainly on our minds if we should be told that that's the direction that we have to go. I, in all honesty, I don't think we're gonna be told from, from Columbus what we have to do. I mean, in terms of going to school, how to go to school and how often to go to school and so on and so forth. What we'll be told to do is what protocols are going to be in place if there is in-person learning. And, and then we're gonna have to go from there. For instance, transporting kids to school and, and a socially-distanced environment, getting kids into the classroom in a socially-distanced environment. And what the buildings are going to look like. Our grocery stores have arrows up and down aisles, you know. And so we might be protocols on which stairs, set of stairs you can go up, which says stairs you can go down. And I know, I know some of our folks that went to, went to the old Cogga Falls High School back in the night with the very large classes, they've often told me that there was one set of stairs you could go up and the other set of stairs you could go down. It was just so loved, so loved. We may, so we may, you know, our, our new kids might be experiencing some of those old, old pieces as well. So, but I don't anticipate the government, the State of Ohio or O D E. So, but I don't anticipate the government, the state of Ohio or ODE telling us that we have to be in person. We have to be digital or we have to be hybrid. Because frankly, the state of Ohio is so diverse. There is a lot of push from Western Ohio counties that are having very few cases. You know, three, four cases in their whole county that are just saying, let's go back. You know, as opposed to, as opposed to Franklin County, Cogga County, you know, Summit County for us. And so that is what I'm anticipating. That's what I'm hearing from the state levels. But specific to your concern, I, and the concern of our community, we hear them. And we are considering all scenarios in preparation for what we are told.
I started back to work and we're under new protocols according to what the state wants or is mandated. And you're absolutely right, Dr. Nichols. I don't think people understand what that impact's going to be. Because I know I was in for a major shock when I walked into a building that I was very familiar with. They're over 20 years. And you're right, when you have stairs that have arrows that point up only, other stairwells that are down and there's some spacing there, that adds or has the potential to add more time. You know, you've got to think about lunch facilities for our kids. How are we going to keep the tables clean? How are we going to keep the kids socially distanced as well as the staff? And then restroom facilities.
Yeah, the restrooms.
You know, these are all things that I know I took for granted. And yeah, so we have our hands full and I'm interested to see what you come up with.
Yeah, I was in OSBA's weekly town hall at four o'clock and Rick Lewis is one of the people that is helping draft the guidelines that we're going to get. He said that optimistically we would get them by the end of the month. So that's one thing to have in the back of our heads. Another thing he said was, don't expect answers and don't expect guidance. He said, expect essentially template of issues, areas of concern, questions that every district should address for themselves. But in getting input on that, the biggest input that they got was that parents, families, stakeholders want their local school board to determine what that's going to be. So there is no state model. I will say, and as to digital learning, the biggest things I'm hearing are that people don't want the hybrid model. So I'm interested to see how that's reflected if it is or not in the survey. And the other comment that people keep giving to me is that they're appreciative of what we did in the spring. But if we're doing distance learning in the fall, their expectations for what that is and how we deliver it are going to increase because we have more time. And that's, that's a very fair point for those people to bring up. But then just to our, the survey itself, ever since you told us that we'd be sending a survey out, I've just been trying to hype that up to people to make sure that they do respond, that we're going to use that survey in determining how we make our decisions. So the best thing they can do is respond to the survey when they give it, get it, so that we can make those decisions that best reflect what our community actually wants. So I would just encourage all of us to keep, whenever we hear from people, just to hype up those surveys because the, but more people that respond, the better we'll be able to reflect what our community really is comfortable with. And I think a lot of it comes down to what people's comfort level is with this disease. And we all know that people have different comfort levels with it, for what it's worth. But I do think there's all, there's just so many things. I, I keep thinking of all the ways in which our districts impacted by this. You know, we have baseball fields at Bullock that people play baseball on. How is that going to look over the summer? Because that it's not run by us, but it's still our property. And what's the liability factor? That's a big question I've heard brought up is what is the liability factor? If they can trace it back to getting it on your property. So there's just, there's a million things. This really does affect every piece of our lives for better or worse.
Ms. Schofield, you were going to say something?
I read, I read today that yesterday state senators heard from a variety of education groups on what a return to school would look like. And one piece of information, lots of pieces of information, but just one piece of information to share. Will Schwartz from OSBA said that one added expense that they've talked about is transportation. To maintain the six-foot social distancing on a school bus with a capacity of 60 students shrinks to 10 kids. And once that shrinks to 10 kids, now you need more drivers, more routes, more fuel, more buses just to get the same 60 kids to school. One small example. I mean, it's a very comprehensive plan and I know everyone's doing their best to, to think about what it might look like.
So one last thing that, one last thing that I'd add. I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
Oh.
Okay. One last thing that I'd add is so that folks know the level of contemplation that we're putting into, into this situation. This week is, is a rather typical week for us. It's not terribly atypical, but we start with, with a Monday check-in with our administrative council. That's building principals and central office staff and, and those kinds of things. And so we, we spend a couple hours at administrative council discussing a number of topics, including back to school in the fall. In CCR, College Career Readiness, which is more of our, our curriculum team, if you will, we spent three hours, solid three, three and a half hours on Tuesday going through a document like this that considers every possible section of, of, of what we need to cover. From students with disabilities, our gifted students, our EL students, our how it's going to be, you know, what it's going to look like in terms of the building. You know, all of it, all of it, every possible section. And from there, that's where we, in that meeting, that's where we started drafting the survey using templates from BASSA, OSBA, using some pieces that we've gathered from other school districts to incorporate into, into our survey. So that we can gather as much information that we can, that then we can couple with whatever comes out of Columbus in, in the next couple of weeks, hoping this week, that's what I was hearing. I'm still hoping it's then at least some words or some direction for us. And, and then Wednesday morning, Ellen chaired our, Ellen McClure chaired our, our cabinet meeting for us. And, and provided me an opportunity, frankly, an opportunity to be a dad a little bit, be with my parents and my son. But, but she chaired that meeting as well that they took a look at this same document in terms of what needs to be done in buildings, what we need to prepare for in buildings, the physical plants. And, and this document, it has all kinds of questions to consider. It doesn't give you real guidance. It just gives you questions to consider. And from there, then we build our own, our own local plans. I have, I'm building a task force, really kind of two task force, if you will. One, in terms of physical plant. And two, in terms of delivery of curriculum. And it will be that task force that will take a look at the surveys in terms of the curriculum pieces and start to make some strong recommendations to the Board of Education in terms of how we would open it in the fall. So I just wanted to say that for you as Board of Education and for any community member that might be or staff member that might be listening, that we are we are deeply engaged in this endeavor.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Do you have one more item under your agenda here?
I do. Return to work. This is a document that we issued last week and it is a document on how we're bringing our staff back this summer, the spring, summer, and the protocols that we're putting into place to maintain adherence to the guidelines issued by the governor and Dr. Acton, and also care and concern for our staff and our community. So, you know, in, in terms of transparency, this is a document that we shared with, with our staff that you all can peruse and the community can peruse.
Thank you for that, Dr. Nichols. I think it's important for our community to know that as they see more and more vehicles in the parking lots of our various facilities, that we're doing every and to make sure that that is done in as safe a way as possible. So thank you.
I think Ms. McClure and our team, you know, we, they did, they did a really nice job in preparing this document and adhering to, to all of the guidance that we are being given out of Columbus.
And they, they were working with, working with the Akron Cleveland Clinic, correct?
Yeah, Akron Children's Hospital and, and with the health department. See, without getting too, too deeply, deep into the weeds, one of the issues that we have to overcome is that we have 88 counties and we have 88 county health departments. And so different counties are handling situations differently. And so as school districts, you know, not all of us are going to look exactly alike because some of us straddle different counties. And, you know, so like in the sixth district compact, well, we're part of Summit County, Kent's part of Portage County. All right. So their, their protocols from their health department might look different than ours. And so that's one of the things that we really want to emphasize is that we need the health departments to be as much on the same page as they can be as well to help provide us school districts with as much guidance as, as we can have so that we can have some level of consistency for our kids. And so that's just one example of, of this situation. Erin Bradley is our school nurse from Akron Children's Hospital to us. And she sits in on our administrative council meetings on Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Ready for your comments?
Well, I, I think like Christie, I think I've said enough, but the one thing that I do want to touch upon is the commencement ceremony yesterday. You know, I know our high school team and, and, and folks, they worked tirelessly. And from my perspective, both as superintendent and as a parent, they knocked it out of the park. So we went to the parade yesterday. Was it yesterday? Yeah. We went to the parade yesterday. And I was, I didn't know, I didn't know what to expect going into it really, you know, in terms of what, what, what would that look like? And frankly, seeing the smiles on our kids and our parents' faces as they drove by, I mean, it just, it just warmed, it just warmed in my heart. I knew so, I know so many kids and parents out of this class, right? And I'm close with this class and it just, it was amazing. I loved it. I thought it was fantastic. And then waited till today to watch the video when Anthony could join me and my parents and watch that video today. All three hours and 57 minutes of it or whatever it was. And, and again, you know, they made the very, very, very best out of a very, very I am an emotional person, both highs and lows, and that's just who I am. And I, I can't, I can't lie to you that I had, I was crying watching the video. So those are my comments. I, you know, I'm just really proud. I'm really proud of them. And, and Dagnabit, I love the class of 2020.
Item H, Board Business, number one, policy, bylaw approval and adoption. It is recommended the Board of Education approve and adopt the following bylaw, which was reviewed at the May 6th, 2020 Board of Education meeting.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Has been moved. We have a bylaw for majority needed for passage. Any discussion?
Are we just discussing number one at this point? Or are we going to include number two in this discussion?
Just.
Just one at this point? Okay.
This is just the bylaw and it's separate from the policies because this is for majority revote.
Alrighty, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Stoichkov, please.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Item two, policy approval and adoption. It's recommended the Board of Education approve and adopt the following policies, which were reviewed at the May 6th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Motion, please.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
I do have a question regarding this. As I was reading through it, especially when we got to attendance, accounting and missing children, I recognized very readily that this policy applies to students who are in a physical school environment. And I was wondering if anyone is exploring an option of, for a policy for when we are conducting instruction virtually. Because we know that when kids are in front of our eyes, it's easy to monitor what's going on. But when they are away from us, how do we account for attendance? How do we account for things that may be going on in the home? And how do we address that as a board?
With you, Ms. Moffett, we've received some guidance with regard to the online learning environment from ODE, at least for this spring. What it looks like after, after the spring, I would expect that we will receive additional guidance and maybe even some legislative change with, with regard to, with regard to hours and what that looks like. We've had a lot of discussion on relative to distance learning schools that have requirements as well. And, and as you know, E-COT got into, got into some difficulties because they were recording kids that weren't enrolled any longer. They were enrolled elsewhere. And so they ran into some difficulties there. And also ran into some difficulties with regard to students that were actually being serviced and not serviced. So that said, I would expect that we're going to have guidance similar to what the K-12 public school online environment looks like. And potentially even legislative change, at least in terms of verbiage. But we don't have it yet.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I think if there's no further discussion, we're ready for a roll call, please.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Moffett?
Aye.
Ms. Schofield?
Aye. Item three, annual evaluation of superintendent treasure. This is a discussion item. And Mr. Gomez, would you like to take the lead here?
Sure. I think we were all fairly pleased with the process that we used last year. Sure. I think we were all fairly pleased with the process that we used last year. So my starting suggestion would be to do that similar process and just briefly, because this will be Christie's first time with us, what we do is we go through the superintendent's evaluation from the state, the treasurer's evaluation from the state guidance document as a board together, and we come up with areas to command. And what we did last year, which I thought was a really great creation of on our part as a board was instead of making accusations that something's bad, we asked a question, said, how is this done? As opposed to assuming things were not being done. And I thought as a board, that was a really great thing that we did. So my personal opinion would be to do the same as we did last year. There's a way to do Zoom subgroups that whomever our technology person in June is can set up for us so that we as the board can go and have that conversation and come back to the meeting. But I really liked what we did last year, but I always note that our policy says that the treasurer and superintendent have to agree to their method of evaluation. So I just think it's important to have that conversation every year to make sure that they agree to the method of evaluation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Other board members comment on this?
No, I was very happy with the changes that we implemented last year. I thought it gave a fair representation because if there were areas of concern, it allowed us as a board to bring it up. And it took some of the, I don't know if confrontation is the right word, but it was a much more collaborative approach that if there were areas of concern that we as a board had, we could bring those out and have a conversation. And actually, at least I think this year, see fruit results, you know, that for what we had some concerns on because I think we are going in the right direction. So I'm okay with staying the course, so to speak, with the evaluation system we're using now.
I agree.
Okay. And Dr. Nichols, you have an opportunity for some input here based on the process we used last summer. Did you feel that that was a productive use of our time and an effective way to assess your work?
I, yeah, I, and you mentioned the changes and presented as a collective document, I think was a was a was this a successful change? Mr. Martin used the word confrontation. I would, I would, I would maybe say tension. You know, it certainly was tense, not only amongst the board members, but but even board member and superintendent and and or treasurer in perhaps in previous situations. Last year wasn't that way. It was more of a collaborative effort to identify what's taking place and what the board would like to see going forward and provided me slash us with the opportunity to fill in the blanks, if you will. You know, Mr. Gomez identified that instead of saying it wasn't happening, well, maybe he just didn't know it was happening behind the degree that it was happening behind the scenes. And so I thought, without belaboring the point, I thought the process was much more effective on both sides, quite frankly, much more productive.
Okay. Well, then I think we we definitely have agreement that we'll continue with that process for this spring. Ms. Stoichkov, you haven't had an opportunity to have that kind of a conversation with us, but hopefully, based on what you've heard. I hope that, I hope that you think that this would be a productive use of your time, also an effective way to provide some feedback and some conversation.
It it certainly sounds like it.
Great. All right then. Let's establish, when do we want to have these conferences? Would we like have our superintendent and treasurer on different evenings? Do we want them both in executive sessions at the same board meeting? What are you thinking in terms of timelines? And just keep in mind, we have to have it completed with the conference by the end of July.
My thought was.
We have one, one board meeting. Go, go ahead, Mr. Gomez.
My thought was if we took one of the meetings in June to meet as a board and discuss superintendent, the other meeting in June to discuss treasurer, and then at the meeting in July, we could meet with both of them individually then. Because if I, I think last year it took us much more time to work through it than it did to present it, if I recall correctly.
I I need to throw this into the mix. I will be out of town from July fourth through the eleventh. So if that would take place during that time, I would not be in attendance.
I'd be fine with moving the July meeting if need be.
Our July meeting except for the fifteenth.
That would work. Oh, then I will need to make arrangements for agenda review, but I can do that at another time.
Okay. So we have a board meeting coming up on June third, and then we have another board meeting three weeks later on the twenty-fourth. So if we focus on the treasurer on the third and the superintendent on the twenty-fourth and an executive session for each of those meetings where we can do that work.
Yeah.
Great to me.
Okay. All right, then we'll plan for an executive session on the third, on the twenty-fourth, and then two executive sessions on July fifteenth. Okay. Thank you. Item four, seven point nine mil levy renewal in November. This is another discussion item. Mr. Gomez, again, please, take the lead.
I just, I just know that we have to take action to get that on the ballot soon. And I wanted to make sure that we were all within the same thought process going on to this. So much has changed since January. I just wanted for my own sanity to make sure we were all on board. We were taking a more conservative approach with the five-year renewal on in November. I certainly still support that. I just want to make, circle the wagon one more time to make sure we're all still in the same mindset.
Ms. Stoichkov, I'm sure you are aware of the timelines that we need board resolutions and those kinds of things.
Yes. So the the deadline to the Board of Elections is August fourth. So any of the, you know, two of the next three meetings will will work if we do them these next two meetings in June, we will be covered. Just as a reminder, this is not any new money. This is a current levy that is in place. This is not any additional dollars. It is just renewing what is already there. This is our last chance without any gap in revenue. So the the renewal, the the current levy goes through the end of the two thousand twenty calendar year. And that's collection. So technically, the levy itself expired last year. The collection expires this year since that's a year behind. So without that, we would start losing a collection year. We would lose a collection year next year, starting in the spring.
Christie, I would like to chime in there and just make sure that everybody is aware and make sure that we are correct in saying that if this were to fall off of our books, then to put it back on the books, so to speak, would then be considered new money because it's post-two thousand thirteen and would not include the rollback associated with levies that originated prior to two thousand thirteen.
And and those are, yes, and that's important for the taxpayer because that has now become their burden instead of the states.
The only concern that I'm hearing, and I'm not sure if concern is the right word, is with the bond, the state money still being up in the air, something we have no control over, that there are folks that are wondering, and I would say some are demanding that that bond be canceled. And I'm not sure that I'm for that because I know that we need to do something with our facilities, but I'm also aware of the fact that this is a little different economy now, and there's a lot more uncertainty. I have no issue with the seven point nine mil levy renewal. But I want to make sure is that all of our spending decisions, we can justify and not go down the avenue of wants as opposed to needs. So we can, so we can continue demonstrating that we're with the money.
Hey, I'm not sure what that was.
I don't either, but. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further thoughts about this renewal? Ms. Stoichkov is on top of it, and we'll be seeing it on our next agenda for the first resolution. So okay, let's move on to item five, future agenda items. We've already identified a few with some executive sessions coming up on our next three meetings. Any other agenda items?
I have one I'd like to bring up. It's in terms of how we are using our curriculum audit information to tie in what with what I've heard referred to as the COVID slide and curriculum and how we're basically how we're prepping our pacing for fall curriculum. How do we determine what is our starting point? So that doesn't have to be at the next meeting by any means, June or July, whatever. Dr. Nichols thinks is best in working with Mrs. Doudons and Dr. Seifert.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gomez. We ready for committee reports? With Alliance for School and Community Growth, Mrs. Moffett.
We met on May twelfth via Zoom, and we talked about all of the things that have been changing, all of the information that has happened recently. Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Nichols gave the Alliance the information regarding the cuts in our budget, the care money that came into our budget to help alleviate some of the painful cuts that were taking place. We talked about OFCC and what we do and don't know about them. Ally addressed graduation that was coming up and told the Alliance group about all of the plans that they had put into place to make this graduation spectacular. Mrs. Calavecchio discussed things that might be happening at the city level. They were going to have a cabinet meeting at one o'clock on that date, and she mentioned that three city employees had tested positive and one in City Hall, so it was closed down, cleaned out, and reopened the following Monday. They were thinking that they might have an eight to nine million dollar cut in funding to be to be announced, I guess, at that point on. Um, let's see. Oh, she mentioned too that the Senate DD building is going to be bringing a hundred jobs into the city and there may be some consideration in making the building larger so that they can bring more employees in. Laura Trelle talked about the chamber and how they are doing business a little differently. The office was pretty much cleaned out. She was the only person who was working, and they are doing business virtually. But she also mentioned that some of the businesses in Cockle Falls are hurting financially and was asking to have people try to booster their support by using utilizing some of the services that these businesses are offering, even when they're closed down. Shelley talked about Stark State and how they are trying to differentiate things due to the COVID virus and talked about, I think we talked about the sixth district compact too being a little concerned about delivery instruction if we have to remain with virtual instruction because some of their courses that they offer, some of those compact classes really require labs for the students to gain the skills and experience that they need to earn the credits for those programs. Ally complimented Dr. Nichols on his graduation speech even before we heard it. She said she thought it was his best ever. I agree. It was quite lovely. The Y person, that is Ryan, correct? Talked about how the Y is adapting to the COVID virus with services that they can and can't offer during this time. They are collecting donations for senior care packages, including board games, puzzles, non-perishable food. Kathy from Western Reserve has received countless donations for the business community, for the hospital. Tom Hager from Keosera talked about how this has impacted their business since thirty percent, oh, they have furloughed thirty percent of their employees. And he is thinking that it may take eighteen to thirty-six months to get back to a normal level. A lot of their relate, a lot of their businesses in the automotive and aerospace industry. Bob Gruber and Tony talked about how this strangely has been somewhat advantageous to the insurance business and healthcare business. Bob Hadorn has been impressed with the creativeness of people and says that trials are being put off for months, so that has changed the way he does some of his legal business, and that is it.
Moffett, Mr. Martin, Athletics and Activity Council.
Well, we haven't had a meeting since our previous one there in April. We have another one coming up in June. I haven't had all the information yet for the governor relaxing some of the rules for baseball and some of the other summer sports. So I'm hoping that Dr. Nichols can chime in to see if there's any possibility that the Senior All-Star Games for the spring sports might be held over the Fourth of July weekend, or if that's more wishful thinking on my part.
Wishful thinking, Mr. Martin. As we discussed it amongst the superintendents, most of the superintendents were not comfortable even participating.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Board policy, Ms. White and Mr. Gomez.
None right now. I'm sure we'll have to meet soon again.
Okay.
And we'll see if, does Dr. Nichols have an update?
The OSBA, yeah.
I'm, the third draft, if you will, is with their editor. As soon as I have that third draft from OSBA, then we will gather and take a look at the third draft for all of the changes that we have. OSBA provides us with a, oh, a sheet that identifies a crosswalk sheet, if you will, if you remember draft two. They'll provide us with a crosswalk sheet and and then we'll have a policy committee meeting. I am still hopeful that we'll be able to have that policy committee meeting, a first read in June at either one of our meetings, and then perhaps adoption of the entire manual in July because it will impact so many of our other operations, not only Not only public school works, but all of our frontline training pieces, our student handbooks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, final forms. I mean, I could go on and on, but if we get that done in July, then we can start working on some of our other documents.
Thank you. Business Advisory Council, Ms. White and Mr. Martin.
We meet coming up Tuesday at 8:00 AM.
Okay.
And just to piggyback on what Ms. Moffett was talking about in her report, businesses, there are some in our community as well as throughout the country that are struggling mightily with the stay-at-home orders and the economic impact. So if you have the ability financially to go out and support businesses locally, please do, because many of our businesses here in Cogga Falls and the surrounding areas of Cogga Falls do support our schools in many ways, and we want to make sure that we let them know that we haven't forgotten about them.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Financial Advisory Committee, Mr. Martin.
Well, we had our meeting on May 14th, and we had one heck of a presentation from our treasurer on the five-year forecast. With our new community members that were present, I believe this was their first go-around to actually have an opportunity to have that information presented to them and come up with a thorough understanding of how school finances work. And again, I wanted to commend our treasurer, Ms. Stoyko, on an excellent presentation for those folks. I'm not sure if any one of them were able to join us this evening, but that meeting went a little longer than we all had anticipated, but there was a lot of good information. Again, Dr. Nichols had reemphasized the importance of our levy that's coming up this November to make sure that passes, and there were some other items that we really, as a district and a board, need to keep our eye open, Ed Choice being one of the other lurking issues out there. It was a very good meeting, and I'm very, very happy that this committee is up and going.
Mr. Martin, may I suggest when our levy committee begins its work, that you, you extend an invitation to those community members on the Finance Committee that they're welcome to join that work for our upcoming renewal?
I believe that situation was talked about at our meeting, and while I won't speak for any of our committee or community members that are on the committee, at our next meeting, we will make that invitation open to them. I will say that I believe they would participate in, so I'm looking forward to that.
Our levy, our levy committee is commencing again on May 26th. We have a golf outing meeting at 4:15 and a levy committee meeting at 5:00.
Thank you.
Foundation and Alumni Association, Mr. Gomez.
We met last Tuesday via Zoom. The biggest work that we continue to do is relative to our website going forward. We are looking like we're going to be ready to launch on June 1st, which is our goal. It's looking really great. It's gonna be just a great way for us to reengage with the community. I hope by now you've heard that the foundation was able to give out $166,000 in scholarships this year, which is just truly remarkable. And they were able to give a scholarship to approximately 20% of the graduating class, so. We weren't able, obviously, to have our in-person event to honor those graduates, but they did receive letters in the mail. I believe they're also gonna receive a program in the mail as a keepsake from the foundation. As an alumni association, we're certainly happy for our approximately 350 or so new alumni. As of last night, they are now part of us as alumni and are officially members of the Alumni Association for five years from the date of their graduation automatically. We also talked about some of the cost savings that we have because we didn't have our events this year. And to put Dr. Nichols on the spot on behalf of the Foundation Alumni Association, we donate a brick to the class each year that's placed outside of Tiger Trail. So on behalf of the Alumni Association Foundation, I'd like to thank Dr. Nichols for personally paying for the brick for the class of 2020. So thank you to him for that.
Thank you. You're more than welcome, class. You know, like I said, this class is special.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, and.
One last thing, I'd like to just recognize Dr. Nichols because now and forever, his family is part of our Alumni Association. So it's, it's a stepping point for the Nichols family as well.
I'll make sure Anthony has his checkbook out.
He gets five years free.
Continuing with you, Mr. Gomez, Legislative Liaison.
There's quite a bit going on. I'm gonna start at the federal level. The HEROES Act is information that's been introduced. It has not passed yet. We don't know if it'll pass, but there would possibly be some funding for school districts, once again, if that were to pass in its current form. The CDC, at the federal level, also released some preliminary guidance for school districts on potentially reopening in the fall. As you probably know by now, the State Supreme Court found House Bill 70 to be constitutional, which is a huge blow for public education. I'd encourage everyone to read the State Supreme Court's ruling on that, as well as the dissent. It's actually relatively easy reading, and it's, I think it's important to understand. But in more positive news, there is a group forming, and it's includes people that were part of the Deroff suit, including Bill Phyllis and among others, to sue the state of Ohio in relation to the expansion of vouchers that we've seen over the years. You might know, 20 years ago, there was a lawsuit where Ed Choice was found constitutional, but that was more specifically related to what was occurring in Cleveland at the time. What was occurring in Cleveland at the time is no longer really what is occurring with vouchers, where many students never step foot in a public school and yet are taking funds away from that public school. So I was invited through some people I know to be involved in that collaborative effort, and will continue to report that information to all of us in Cogga Falls as soon as I get it. One good thing that Betsy DeVos did, which I'm gonna scroll to Ms. Moffett's face to see her surprise, but one good thing he announced new grants for K-12 schools for remote learning opportunities, so that is a shock, but I'll take it.
She has an interior motive, but I didn't say that.
I'm sure, but I'll take, I'll take a positive thing. The United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit Court, which does cover us, stated in a ruling that we should recognize a basic minimum education to be a fundamental right, and many people are already pointing to that as a really important rule, judicial ruling that'll continue to be brought up in education lawsuits to come. There's also an achievement gap post-COVID-19 task force that I sent you all information about. And a few more things. The school sports guidance is supposed to be coming out from the state of Ohio as well as OHSAA, hopefully soon, in relation to what is a non-contact sport. That has not really been defined yet, so there is hope potentially for some fall sports, but that guidance is yet to come. The Ohio House passed House Bill 111, and it requires public and private schools to transmit a transferred student's records within five school days. That is expected to pass the Senate and be signed by the governor this year, so that would be a new regulation for us. The House Ways and Means Committee passed House Bill 255, which requires the state's tax expenditure report to include information on property tax exemptions and requires a periodic review of each property tax exemption. So that would be good and good for us because they're going to review those property tax exemptions on a state level to make sure that they're compliant with the agreement that they made when they received that exemption. So that could potentially be good news for us. And the State Board of Education passed a resolution urging the General Assembly to waive the requirement that the state board increase the promotion score for the third grade English Language Arts Assessment, which is part of the third grade reading guarantee for the 2020-21 school year due to the pandemic. And lastly, in the Senate Governor, General Government Agency Review Committee, they held a second hearing on Senate Bill 248, which would extend until November 30th of 2022, the moratorium on the requirement for storm shelters to be constructed for new school construction projects, which is especially relevant to us.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Last, Student Achievement Liaison. I mentioned at our last meeting that virtual meetings of the statewide Student Achievement Liaisons were being scheduled. Those have now been scheduled for the month of June regionally, so I'll be attending within our region on the board's behalf. The focus of those conversations are on academic progress and how do we assess academic progress remotely and with integrity? And then also, I think Mr. Gomez used the phrase COVID slide, which I think has become a new term of art. Because the COVID slide will also be one of the topics of conversation on our agenda because there are concerns about how much progress children have made during this last grading period, and this continues. And probably even more importantly, the children who have perhaps slid backwards as a result. So the final topic that will be part of our discussion, as summer intervention programs. I believe this is one of the ways that districts can use the federal CARES money to provide intervention for children we believe may have suffered from COVID slide. I'll keep you all updated on all of that. We're ready for comments. Let's begin with Ms. White.
Um, I just have a couple of things. I wanted to point out that I know in Dr. Nichols' notes, we've served over 25,000 meals, and I just think that's tremendous for our schools and our children. So that just amazed me when I read it. I wow, you know. I also wanted to congratulate the high school administration for such a wonderful job, the effort, the time, and everything that they did for commencement. It was just amazing. I want to wish our 2020 class much success and good luck in the future. And I just had a question. When are we gonna start our book club? I know, but that was my, that's me.
Okay, we'll leave that as a future agenda item. Thank you, Ms. White. Let's move on to Mr. Martin.
Okay, again, I wanted to commend Dr. Nichols and all of our staff for putting together a fabulous 2020 graduation celebration. It was different seeing it from a sitting-down position, and I believe truly that we made the best of the situation. And I've had folks tell me that our alumni, that they from the honk-out parade and this virtual graduation, they actually like that more than the pomp and circumstance of blossom. So, you know, for me, my kids are out of school, so I won't have the opportunity to see my kids go through virtually. I had that opportunity there on stage. But this will be interesting for the up-and-coming class to see if we're staying on a distance-learning situation, and the class of 2021 also goes virtual. If that might not be something that we move into a new tradition. So again, hats off to everyone. I thought it was a fabulous program. I watched all the way through. Yes, I know the hair's a little long. And yes, a couple of us were a little bit stoic, I think is the word that I heard used. But it was great to see the kids come up, introduce themselves, pick up their diploma, and then have that last picture taken as they're moving their tassel across. The only other thing I have is, I haven't spoken much about it recently because of the money issues out there and the stay-at-home orders, so to speak. But forever our children, the nonprofit, it hasn't been an easy time for nonprofits raising a lot of money because the businesses aren't able to give what they used to be able to give. But I received word about 15 minutes ago that we have a couple of grants coming to us, so I can't wait to have more information to see what we might be able to do to help some of the kids in Akron and Cogga Falls here over the summer, so. Looking forward to possibly giving an update at my next opportunity to comment in our next board meeting. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mrs. Moffett.
I have a couple of things, and I, the light is fading, but I'm so grateful that Anthony brought up Bill Phyllis and his Ohio O and E program. I actually copied things from the internet regarding his concerns, and I'm hoping that perhaps as a board, we can address some of the concerns that they are expressing as well. And I did have a question that can be out, floating out there, but the most recent publicity is talking about how public schools have taken a greater hit in funding than the charter schools, and so I was wondering if we, as a board, could discuss that and maybe direct some something to our legislators, because I don't think that we should be taking a greater hit than other schools throughout the state, so. That's just for us to ponder. I wanted to thank the community for their donations that were over tables in the library last evening when that crazy all-night party took place. And I wanted to thank the high school administrators for everything, but the all-night party was really kind of fun to watch because they got pretty engaged and energetic about distributing the prizes to the students. Um, I also wanted to acknowledge our technology person because it's my understanding through tears that he's leaving us very, very soon. And I want Jim to know that he will be missed terribly, but I invite him to enjoy his renewal as Mary Jane Stankini calls it, instead of retirement, and wish him much joy in, in his retirement renewal. And also, behind me, I don't know that you can see it, but it's the sign that I made to put on my car yesterday for the honk-out. So I'm just going to quickly share it because I want people to know that all of us, oh, it'll be backwards, won't it?
No.
No, it's fine.
Okay, good. It says, "Congratulations, class of 2020. Go Black Tigers." So I wanted to congratulate all of our grads and wish them the very best in their future.
Moffett, Mr. Gomez.
Yes, I, Lincoln and PTA had their last meeting of the year, of course, virtually Monday night, so I was able to attend that, and I hyped up our parent survey that's gonna be coming, making sure they knew to tell everyone they know how important it is to respond to that. The graduation honk-out yesterday, I had no idea what to expect, but it was just amazing. It really was. And the commencement ceremony was really wonderful as well. I'll add my thanks to those that have already been said, but also to Tim Frankish, who can't possibly have made money, given the amount of time he put into that. Thank you to him for coming forward and doing that, because it was truly beautiful. Thank you to him for coming forward and doing that because it was truly beautiful. Um, I'll let you all know that, um, Friday at six PM, Roberts is doing a wave out to their eighth graders. They would, um, invite any and all board members that want to come to come. Please wear a mask. Um, and we'll be standing six feet apart waving out, um, the Roberts eighth graders. And my thanks to Dr. Nichols for his part in helping make that happen. Much appreciation to him. Um. I hope that all of our families enjoy summer however they can, whatever we can do. Uh, and I wanna join Ms. Moffett in thanking Jim publicly for all that he's done for our school district. I'm sure he is gratefully waiting for us to adjourn this school board meeting, knowing that he never has to come to another one. Um, I'm probably lording it over Mr. Bugatti and Mrs. McClure as they just, you know, signed up for three more years of these. So I'm sure he, he's enjoying that part as well.
It'd be okay for me to interject and thank the board for the support you've given me over the past almost seven years that have been here. Dr. Nichols, Mr. Mr. Mrs. McClure and Mr. Bugatti as part of the cabinet have made me feel very appreciated, as has the board. And I have a heck of a team with the four CTISs of Mr. Auras. Um, Mr. Um, Winkler, Mrs. Crozier and Mrs. Nicholson, as well as the three media specialists. And, um, Mrs. Allerton, Mrs. Gideon and Mrs. Lindy. Um, they have been amazing people and I can only thank the board for being able to allow me to build a team that will keep Cogga Falls moving forward, especially in light of everything that's happening with the new transition into much more of a blended and fixed learning model. Um, and finally, I have to thank the people who are leaving because I don't know if the board knows, but Debbie Newcomb is leaving as well. And, um, Rob Vaughn and Tristan Smith have already left. It's been a heck of a team, but at this point of transition, you have David Thursby and David Moore and Joe Luskey and whoever the board and Dr. Nichols finds to replace me at a critical point that I think will definitely move the board forward. And I thank you all for every minute that I've had in Cogga Falls. It has been a pleasure and then some. Yeah, for me publicly, thank you so much for joining our team. You've delivered everything that I asked you to deliver and then some seven years ago, and you've become a true friend. Thank you.
All right then, folks. Um, I think all that needs to be said has been said. Um, though I would just like to add that I thought the honk out was so spectacular. Whether we do graduation virtually or not in the future, I'd like to seriously consider making that an annual event. Um, the kids and the families just enjoyed it so much. And the way they decorated their cars and the, just the joy, it was just a joyous occasion. So whether graduation looks the same or different than, um, than it has in the past or that it has this year, I hope, um, the high school team thinks about maybe making that part of that graduation week because it sure was a lot of fun. And on that note, folks, I think we're ready for the big motion.
Move.
Second.
And the roll call, Ms. Stoykoy.
Mr. Gomez.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Ms. Moffett.
Hi.
Ms. Schofield.
Hi.
Ms. White.
Hi.
Good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Great weekend, everyone.
You too. Thank you.